Talk about the four candidates running for Fresno City Council District One. The district generally covers West Fresno and the Tower District, or at least parts of the Tower District. Ballots are already outdated. If you don't have one, make sure you contact the elections office. You have until June 7th to return them, and you can always vote in person as well. Let's get right into it. Let's meet the candidates. Annalisa Perea, she's an elected member of the State Center Community College District Board. She's 34 and lives in the Tower District and also serves on many other civic boards. If her name sounds familiar, it should because her father, Henry R., and her brother, Henry T., were also Fresno City Council members in the past. And her day job is a city planner working for QK. So, Annalisa, thank you for joining us. Kerry Catalano, he's a 48-year-old public relations professional and advisor to nonprofits. He also serves on many civic boards, and he's currently the chairman of the Fresno Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. He and his husband live near the Fresno City or Fresno High School area. Kerry, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Mike Briggs, he lives and works in the Tower District and is a real estate broker. He's also a former Fresno City Councilman and a state assemblyman. The 63-year-old is married and he has three adult children, all living in New York, maybe to his chagrin. But Mike, thanks for joining us. And finally, Jeremy Price, a former Fresno police officer for 15 years who now runs his own insurance agency. This is the first time running for office for Jeremy. The 49-year-old lives in the old Fresno High Area with his wife, Talia, and two school-age children. Jeremy, also, thank you for joining us today. All right, let's get right into it. First, I want to ask a philosophical question, and we'll start with Mike Briggs. What is the role of city government to you?
Very basic: sewer, water, garbage, police, and fire. They're not there to solve our problems, they're not there to take care of us from birth to grave. They're not there to solve problems like, well, we'll just buy the Tower Theater to solve that problem. We'll just give away houses to solve the homeless problem. That is not the role of a city, city, city government.
Annalisa Perea, city, what's the role of city government?
Thanks, David. So, the role is to protect the general welfare of their people. So, that comes down to public safety, that's public infrastructure. It's just getting down to the basics, which we're struggling to do today. So, just looking forward to getting back to the basics and protecting the people of Fresno.
Jeremy Price, this is your first time running for office. What do you believe the city government should be doing for the people?
I think the city government has lost the fact that it's a civil service. And needs to get back to that. It seems to be something that people get into to make money. It seems to be something that people get into just for themselves, for their careers. And the whole aspect of being a civil servant has been lost. So, that needs to come back. And also, just getting the basics down, and we're going to have to do a reboot. And as far as the big picture, but we need to get everything back under control as far as the civil service part.
All right, Kerry Catalano, what do you believe the city government should be doing?
The role, uh, thank you, David. The role level of local government is to create a community for families and individuals can grow and thrive. And that for each council district to represent the voice of every resident within their jurisdiction to ensure that streets, sidewalks, public safety, job creation is at the forefront of local government. Local government is the voice of its people, and it should always be.
All right, just to know on today, for the next hour, at least until time is up, we're going to encourage debate, we're going to encourage to find out who you are. Let the people, let the voters know who you are and how you're different. I'll ask questions, I'll make some follow-ups, and you'll answer. And maybe you can provide some counterpoints to what other people are saying. If you want to jump into the conversation before I ask you, you know, if there's a point that somebody else makes, just raise your hand, and we'll get to you. And just please wait until I call on you, and we'll get through as many topics and questions as we can in the hour. So, we asked our GB Wire audience to send us questions on Facebook and other means. And one most asked about is the Tower Theater. Of course, the city agreed to buy it for $6.5 million and indemnify the other parties involved. And I'm going to ask you guys, do you agree with the city council's decision to, you know, purchase the Tower Theater? What do you like or dislike about it? What do you think of the indemnification? And we'll start with Kerry Catalano.
Uh, this has been a very divisive topic for the district, and I think all of us know it. I do wish that the local government, our council members in the city, would have worked more diligently early during the pandemic to shore up the finances of the Tower Theater. I think that we should have purchased it from the get-go when the owner was expressing some financial difficulties in January of 2021. The reality is, it didn't happen. And we went through well over a year and a half of very divisive conversation. The city council made the decision that I would have made in January 2021 to purchase the asset. I believe we could have avoided significant conflict and division within the community. I do not agree with the indemnification. I think it puts the taxpayers at risk. I do believe a private sector individual could have purchased it long ago. But the reality is, the council made the decision that they made. Their, the next council member is really going to have to see through the execution of that decision. I think we have lots of things that we have to make a decision on. You know, the conversation about adding parking meters to the parking lot is nothing that I would support. But the reality is, the decision's been made, and the indemnification's probably going to bite us in the butt a little bit later on while we're going to have to pay some legal fees, but it is what it is.
Jeremy, what do you think about the Tower Deal, and would you support the indemnification the way the entire deal went down?
I don't support the indemnification because, like Kerry said, you don't want to leave your constituents liable. We don't want to take money from them to help create, fix what the city has created. They've dragged on way too long. The city, in my opinion, should have gotten involved, but rather got involved to find a buyer. To find someone that was, that had the funding that could buy it right away. I don't really think that the city buying it is going to make or break the city, but I do think they got in a little too deep, so they were, their only way out was to buy it. They could have been a third party and peacefully got this done a lot quicker, like Kerry said, and just eliminated the big mess that has been going down there for, for well over two years now. So, you know, it's one of those things where if you ask people west of that, and they're going to give, they're not going to give a care about it at all. But if you ask people in the Tower area and close by, they're going to have their opinions on it. So, you really have to go towards the masses and not go behind closed doors and make deals, and don't be secretive about things, and keep everything transparent, which the current council is very good at being secretive. And I think that's a little bit shady, a lot shady, actually.
Jeremy, we're going to talk about that a little bit later, but to go on.
So, anyhow, that's my answer on the theater.
Right, Annalisa, you, you've said, and I've seen you, you're on the front lines there protesting the Tower Theater. What do you think of the deal, and tell us why you were out there to protest?
Yeah, so it's not about protesting deals, it's about protecting zoning law here in our city of Fresno. I think everybody should be playing by the same rules. At this point, the city is purchasing the Tower Theater, so I'm going to get behind and support that and make sure that we see it through. It's not the, the ideal scenario, but it is the best-case scenario for moving forward. I, I would have liked to have seen the Painted Table purchase the theater. They put in an offer, and it was rejected. I know a number of other private folks that have put in offers, and those were rejected. So, I, I don't think, you know, buying, the city buying the theater from day one would have been just the solution. But at this point, we are where we are. And I'm going to make sure moving forward that we're going to see it through, and that the theater will be thriving.
Now, you talk about zoning. What particular zoning issues do you think exist that might prevent, let's say, Adventured Church, who wanted to purchase the theater, from completing that purchase?
Yeah, great question. So, really, you know, this was not a battle of religion. This is a battle about zoning. And so, what the zoning law says is that we cannot have religious institutions in specifically zoned areas in portions of our city. We, we love our churches in the Tower District. You know, we have a very diverse, eclectic group of churches with all different religions here in the Tower Theater. So, I think at this point, we have to be very cognizant of the business community we have in the Tower District. We have a lot of CUPs and ABC licenses that would have been put at risk if you put a sensitive use next door to them.
True, but with something like that, Kerry will get to you in a sec. Putting a zoning, or saying that a church can't operate there, are you running afoul of certain First Amendment concerns? I know there is a federal law that concerns zoning in churches. Would the city be at risk any of that if they use zoning as a justification?
You know, and that's been a debatable question thus far. But based on the interpretations that we've gotten from the city attorney, that would not have been the case. You know, if somebody wants to argue otherwise, you know, sure. But moving forward, I'm going to trust that when we hire the next city attorney, I'm going to, I'm going to trust them. I'm going to go with their instinct. They're the experts when it comes to legal law. And they're going to do what they need to do to protect us and our decisions moving forward.
All right, we get Kerry then Mike. Kerry, real quick.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I was on the planning commission. We adopted a brand-new general plan. We made the zoning very specific for the Tower Theater. We had a tremendous amount of community input. The zoning for the Tower Theater was never at risk. Not one, not one person on the planning commission, not one person on the city council, not one council member would have allowed for the zoning to be, to be changed at all. So, the zoning was never at risk. Let's just remove that off the table. The reality is, we had council members that knew the Adventist Church was in the Tower Theater renting the facility. Everybody turned a blind eye for a number of months. This did not become a significant issue until the fall of 2021. We knew the property owner was having significant financial risk during the pandemic, the forced shutdown, due to, due to pandemic, and nobody was offering any significant financial assistance. The reality is, all of this could have been eliminated if our local leaders would have made decisions early to shore up the finance, the financial needs of the Tower Theater. We wouldn't even be here today. And on top of the city attorney, the city attorney reports to the Fresno City Council. The city attorney is going to do exactly what the Fresno City Council says. The reality is, we absolutely need to look at a charter change to remove that jurisdiction so our city attorney can remain independent and offer good legal guidance.
Kerry, you bring a good point. We'll talk about it in just a second. Let's hear from Mike. Mike, you live a couple blocks away from the Tower Theater. What do you think of the deal? What do you think of the zoning arguments that have been made?
Well, first of all, I can see the Tower Theater out my living room window here. So, I'm always watching over it to make sure it's safe. One of the most important overriding issues is historical preservation. When I was previously on the council, I took the lead on all historical preservation issues. But the family, back when Dottie Abbott owned the theater, the mom, they got it registered as a national historic site, facility. Therefore, it's protected through that. Government did not do that. The family, the Abbott family, did that and decided that on their own. It's protected. The historical integrity of the building is protected. Secondly, zoning protected it.
Well, his question is, would the historical protection be at risk if Adventured Church owned the theater?
Absolutely not, absolutely not. However, it's not.
Not be an argument, then, if the Adventured Church said they'd be honoring the historic preservation? Is that really an argument made not to sell to them?
No, and I'm not making an argument about Adventured Church. I'm almost to my point here, I promise. Finally, you know, it's been discussed, well, the city should have done this, the city should have done that. It's none of the city's business who buys and who controls and who owns that theater as long as they follow the rules, the zoning rules, and the historical preservation rules. In the end, the city comes and says, who, by the way, the city, Mayor Lee Brand, shut down our city, which began the financial problems, not just of the Tower Theater, but all of us who had business. Tower Theater sat there for a couple of years, not being able to make money. And of course, they're in trouble. But that doesn't mean it's the city's problem to come and bail them out and get them out of this situation, or decide who buys it and who doesn't buy it. It was a private property manner, matter, and should have been left in the private sector.
All right, Mike, thanks. All right, let's move on. Since we brought it up, let's talk about the city attorney. Doug Sloan, the longtime city attorney, says he is leaving for a job in Southern California, points to be determined. That means the city council gets to hire the next city attorney. And who knows, maybe one of you guys, why don't you take office next January, maybe making that decision? Because, you know, we know the city council moves at the speed of government. So, Jeremy Price, what are you looking for in the city attorney? And what do you think of the idea that the city attorney is hired and fired by the city council?
You know, that's a great question. I, I think it's, it's good and bad. You know, granted, you should always have a neutral party in there when you're looking for someone of high staff that are like that. You don't want, obviously, you don't want them in the pockets of any of the council members. But I have been in contact with county officials that have said for years that the city attorneys are not only not good, but they're horrible. And they're, they need to all be gone through and redone. It's, it's hard for me as a, as a person in this city who pays the taxes that I do to believe right now that anybody in the city council and the city attorney's office is actually on the up and up. So, I, I think that that's one of the things that they need to bring in, a second party, a neutral second party, as someone to maybe vet the candidates a little, a little more thoroughly, and to make sure that there are no strings attached when that person gets hired or sitting in that seat.
Right, Annalisa, should the city council be in charge? Kerry kind of floated the idea of a charter change. What do we think about it?
Yeah, so I think there's no reason why we should, we should change it. I think we're right in line with what other cities are doing in the state of California. What I'm going to be looking for in the next city attorney is somebody that's honest, somebody with high integrity, somebody that's going to help us make the best decisions possible. And I think it's pretty, it's as simple as that.
Anybody in mind?
I currently have no one in mind.
All right, Mike Briggs, you know any attorney who wants a job?
Yeah, there's probably a lot of them. But you know, it's, it's good to find somebody who has experience in municipal government. It's a separate kind of law. You don't bring in a criminal defense attorney to do the job. But I was on the council, trust me, the city attorney must be hired by the council and remain accountable to the council. I wouldn't support any changes in that process. It's good to look outside the city for somebody who's been a city attorney somewhere else for a few years and got that experience. I think a lot of people like that should only stay, city manager, city attorney, just stay four or five years like the council, and then move on to another job when you bring in someone else.
Kerry, lots of interesting ideas. Your floating idea of changing the charter, maybe turn around for the city attorney?
Yeah, number one, I've known Doug Sloan for a number of years. I, his wife was my business teacher in high school, so I know them well. I'm sad to see them go, and I'm excited for their next journey. Listen, if you look at all the cities throughout California, there's all different kind of modelings. There's, we're a primary form of government. That's what the voters decided to do. Some cities elect their city attorneys, some attorneys report to the city council, some attorneys report to the mayor themselves. So, there's not one size, one shoe fits all municipalities. I'm looking for someone that is honest, that has the strength to tell seven bosses that you are absolutely wrong, and I am not caving. The challenge is, when you have seven bosses, you get seven different directions. And when majorities flip and switch as constantly as they do in some local governments, it can create significant chaos. And I am going to be looking and having broad conversations with the community about a charter amendment. I think the current structure is not working. I think the CEO of the city cannot get significant legal advice if the difference of opinions differ between the legislative and the executive branch. And so, we either have to look at a shared modeling responsibility plan, or we need to look at a charter amendment where it reports to the mayor, or a charter amendment where the city attorney is elected by the people and reports to the people. At this point, I think the position has become highly political over the last couple of years, and it needs to be independent from political pressure.
Kerry, anybody in mind you recommend to be?
You know what, the best part about democracy is that you bring everybody and let everybody apply. I have absolutely nobody in mind, but we need somebody with municipal government experience that has political savvy experience as well, because you need to learn how to navigate the land, the landfills and minefields out there.
All right, all right, candidates, let's talk, back to the, kind of the concept of the city purchasing things. City is considering that they've already purchased many hotels and turned them into temporary shelter for the homeless. Now, some advocates are asking the city to purchase the troubled Mobile Home Park, Trails End. So, what should the city do with Trails End and the next mobile home park? Or the next motel or hotel that it becomes a troubled asset? Is this a city that should be getting into this type of business? We'll start with Kerry. Go back to you.
Yeah, I think the, the whole acquisition of motels throughout the city was done through some legislative action at the state through Project Home Key and the chair of the Housing Authority. None of this would have been possible to house over 1,000 of our residents from our streets and our byways and our highways without that funding from the federal, from the state government. I do think that we need to look at how we could properly house our residents, and I would be very open to the acquisition of the Mobile Home Park. I think that we are very fortunate that the state has significant additional resources available to it. We are, we need to preserve affordable housing. We know many of the residents that live in this Mobile Home Park have limited resources to pay escalating rents. And this is a way to have an affordable covenant put in place for those that are living in this current Mobile Home Park. The city is quasi-responsible for the maintenance at this point. And so, I, I would very much be open to exploring the acquisition of it as long as we could put it into more of a community land trust that has been formed by a nonprofit group so we could afford the, put the affordable covenant into place.
And Kerry, real briefly, a follow-up on that. Do you do this with any troubled assets? And what do you do when the money dries up? Obviously, a lot of it's coming from federal money, you know, the state. What do you do when that money is no longer there?
I think we're going to do a case-by-case scenario. I think building the housing trust fund, I think building the portfolio of the community land trust so the nonprofit could actually acquire funds to do these troubled assets. That's really the goal of the community land trust that's being formed right now, to which I'm on the board, is to really acquire additional resources to look at these troubled assets. Took a look at homes that have been abandoned for a number of years that have become really a blight to our community to put them in the land trust, to put an affordable covenant into place. So, I think that, David, there are dollars that are readily available out there that we have not been tapping into for a number of years. And I feel very confident that we have the right people at the table to get those resources.
All right, and just a reminder, Kerry is also on the Fresno Housing Authority. Speaking of people in real estate, Mike Briggs, you're in real estate. Should Fresno purchase these troubled assets to help the homeless or those who are in need? You're saying no, why not?
Well, first of all, the people in this debate today, I call them my fellow candidates because we're not really opponents, we're not against each other on almost anything. We're all kind of mostly in agreement just how to get there. We have some differences. One big place where I think we differ in philosophy is, I don't think government's the answer. I don't think the city ought to be bailing out people, places, and things. That's not the role of government. It's a role of the private sector. Most homes in Fresno are owned by private people. Why all of a sudden is the city going to start owning homes? It's a slippery slope some people would like us to go down. We should not own and manage and run a mobile home park. We should not own and manage a theater. We should not own and manage a, what's that, baseball field out there that?
Chancy Park?
No, not Chancy, the other one, with the, we're. Grant Park, yeah, the city, we're not equipped to do that. That's not our role. We shouldn't be buying homes. I can see a program where we take city funds that are investment funds. We invest in the stock market all the time and invest in people buying homes. I could see that. It's a good, secure, and safe investment for the city, and it could help people get in homes. But this idea where the city's jumping and buying things, that's, I've never seen it happen like this in Fresno before, and it's a direction that some people want to take. Because if I'm elected to the city council, we will not go in the direction where the city is the answer to all of our problems.
All right, go to Annalisa, Jeremy, and then Kerry. Annalisa, is this something the city should be getting into? And where does the money come when it's no longer coming from the federal or state?
Right, so I think one of the reasons why we're in this situation is because the city has a rent stabilization ordinance for mobile home parks that has not been followed. It's been adopted since '87, I believe, but it hasn't been implemented. So, that's the first thing we have to do, is make sure that we're following the ordinances that have been put on the books to help protect residences. Moving forward, I do support bigger investments in the city, land trust fund, community land trust funds. These are the mechanisms that, as government, we have the rights to utilize when it comes to protecting the general welfare of the people. And in some cases, it comes down to housing. How do we house people? How do we decrease homelessness? How do we make sure that we are interfering folks from entering a pathway of homelessness? And in many cases, residents that do live in mobile home parks are on fixed incomes, and they're just one paycheck away from homelessness. So, yes, I do believe that the city does have a right to step up and take a bigger step when it comes to ownership of this mobile home park in particular. Is, is there an easy way to do it? No, there's never an easy way to do it, but I think there are mechanisms in place. There are mechanisms in place we can invest more into moving forward to make sure that if this does happen again in the future, we're better prepared to respond to it at that time.
Jeremy, what should the city do at places like Trails End and other places that are considered troubled assets?
Well, I've actually been through Trails End several times when I worked with the police department, and it is unique. I've been through other mobile home parks that are well-maintained, very well-kept because the owners have the associations that, that make sure that that happens within the park. The Trail Ends Park is a very unique picture where the, where the residents, and I know this is not going to be a happy, a happy statement to some people, but the residents have destroyed that park. They've allowed it to get that way. It was always that way when I was in there. We were chasing people in and out. So, the city, as far as the city getting involved, the city needs to get involved, but it doesn't need to purchase it. It needs to get involved by getting the ownership squared away, maybe start finding the ownership, doing things like, you know, putting penalties if they don't get it cleaned up themselves, helping the tenants with their renovating their mobile homes, getting the bad tenants out of there, because there's always going to be bad seeds. And that, that's an easy solution. You take out the bad seeds, you sit down with the owners of the park, you find, go door-to-door, find out who are the ones that are there that are making the problems, and it's a common sense approach. Like Mike said, we're, we're not here to bail people out. That's been the trend for the past two and a half, three years, bailing people out with money. Just keep throwing money at them. We need to give tools. We need to make this city a little better and have the tools so people can make their lives better instead of just throwing money after all the problems.
All right, Kerry, you had a brief rebuttal?
Yeah, I think government's the conduit of positive change. You know, we didn't get here overnight to this housing crisis. Government created it, and then, because government did not, and government is of the people, by the people. We are elected by the public. The reality is, past, past administrations, past councils, past governors, nobody actually put any significant investment in affordable housing or housing in the state of California, in the city of Fresno, throughout the country. And so, we are at a significant crossroads in the city of Fresno.
And Mike.
Wait, wait, what, so what I'm saying is, government has a role because it's the redistribution of those dollars to key investments that need to be made. And at this point, our working families do not have the means to afford what is currently on the market. And government and the private sector have created that mess together.
All right, Mike, a comment on that, and then we will talk about where to build housing. So, Mike.
Just real briefly, real briefly, it's, yes, government can be involved in a leadership role. The government needs to be leaders in solving problems like the homeless, the, the, the mobile home park. But the idea where the government is the answer, and where we're going to start buying things because that's the answer. It doesn't have to be that way. Let's play the leadership role. And if there's, if there's infractions out at the Mobile Home Park, yeah, that's the leadership. We need to go in and clean that up. If there's able-bodied people living in our neighborhood street, the government, the city, needs to take a leadership role in fixing that. But the idea where we're just going to put the money in to fix everything, we don't have that kind of money, and that's not the role of government.
All right, Mike, mayor unveiled his housing plan. There are a lot of people who have a lot of opinions on housing. You're the real estate guy. Where should, what is your vision of how Fresno should build residential living spaces? More single-family homes, apartments, affordable market rate? I want to hear all your visions of that, and we'll start with Mike.
Yeah, I, first of all, we need more apartments. We need more affordable housing for people in Fresno. That is an issue, and that's a problem. People who are hardworking are having trouble affording to buy a house or to get into an apartment, to rent an apartment. I talked to somebody who's been renting for 23 years, and so a fire damaged their place, and they're out. And after 23 years, they're not qualifying to get into another place. Doesn't mean the city should buy and build apartments, but we need to find ways to make housing accessible for everyone. Again, I believe that the city, homeownership is the key to building strong neighborhoods, homeownership. The city could take monies, their investment funds, and turn it into a down payment assistance, which they would get back when the house sells eventually in the future. It's a very safe way to invest funds and get funds back, way safer than just building and giving homes away, which I do not believe in. There's things the city could do, and I think planning and zoning, I think, keep going further and further out and spreading the edges of the city is not as healthy as doing some infill building, some adding, and I don't want to steal her thunder because Annalisa Perea has said it before, but the small houses, I think those are a great idea.
All right, let's hear from Annalisa. You are the city planner. This is kind of your wheelhouse. So, where should the city build people, places for people to live? And then, what kind of places?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, there's no one answer, and I think we need a little bit of, a lot of diversity when it comes to our housing stock. So, we all know that we have thousands of vacant lands or parcels here in the city of Fresno. We have thousands of vacant residential homes currently sitting in our, in our districts. It's, we have to start with the low-hanging fruit. The number one cause of fires is, you know, is vacant homes. I was walking in a neighborhood the other day, and, you know, there was a code enforcement officer there helping to remove somebody that was about to start a fire to cook a meal in a vacant home. So, it's got to start with, how, how can we build more infill units here in our city? On the other hand, you know, we, we do have what's called the West Area Specific Plan currently in the works. On the other hand, you know, we, we do have what's called the West Area Specific Plan currently in the works. This is the planning document that should have been done decades ago. And this is going to be the blueprint for how we're going to grow west of the ninety nine. This is the blueprint for how we're going to grow in District One moving forward. So I'm looking forward to seeing a combination of more infill development, more vertical building, because we can only go horizontal so much before we start running into more and more of our agricultural lands. And we, we do have to build more homes at every income level. So from apartments to condos, affordable housing, all the way to single family homes. I'm going to be pushing forth bold policy when it comes to securing affordable housing and making that in perpetuity, affordable in perpetuity. So there's different, there's different housing mechanisms and structures that we need to be building all the way from infill tiny homes, all the way up to single family homes. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Hey Carrie, you're on the Housing Commission. What do you say? Where we're supposed to go and what kind of homes?
Yeah, it's a blended portfolio. Number one, we have about a forty three thousand unit deficit in the entire county of Fresno, of which half of that is in the city of Fresno itself. That is a large hill to climb. We know that we have not built significant affordable apartment complex for, you know, well over two decades. We are building them now, of course, but the rent astronomical that our low income working families cannot afford it. Listen, my mom lives in a mobile home park. She's a part of a rent stabilization program in Clovis. She was a waitress. It goes up four percent a year, but that four percent over twenty years has really added up. So the reality is we, that when we approved the twenty thirty five general plan, we made it very clear. We needed a blended portfolio of how we grow as a community. Fifty percent of new housing construction would be in infill. Fifty percent would be in new growth areas. Priority growth area number one was west of ninety nine, just like Annalisa said. Lots of thought and lots of care needs to go into the redevelopment of the western corridor of our city because of significantly bad planning practices of the past. And so we have a steep hill to climb. Hold on, I'm not done yet. So we needed, number one, we need to expand and enhance and to significantly fund the community land trust. That is being developed right now. That is not government owned. All the vacant properties that, and Annalisa and everybody's right, all the vacant homes that are sitting within in District One and throughout each district need to be put into those, into the community land trust. So it's affordable in perpetuity. Number three, we are never going to have enough down payment assistance for our families because forty thousand dollars is never going to be enough for these struggling working families to pay a twenty two hundred dollar a month rent mortgage payment. Number three, we need to encourage the development community to support inclusionary zoning. Number four, I'm sorry.
I think, I think that's all we got time for Carrie.
Too bad. Okay.
All right, Jeremy, Jeremy. Number five, where, where should homes build, be built? What kind of homes? What are your, what's your thoughts on the vision of homes and living spaces in Fresno?
Well, I think we need more. We need more affordable living. One, we need to give builders incentives to build affordable housing. I mean, right now, there, there are none. That, that if I had a choice to build some apartments that were twenty two hundred a month or build apartments that were six hundred a month. And I still received a five percent kickback every month on my property, I would build the twenty two hundred a month. So we as a local government need to step in and get incentives for these builders to build that affordable housing. We need to look at places, maybe where these homes are dilapidated and vacant, in certain areas of town where we can rebuild on the properties. Incentivize the owners, keep them as, as giving, giving them tax incentive or even monthly incentives on income of the vacant land. But I think the other thing we need to look at, David, is, is the increase of water usage, the increase of power. That we, this summer, how many people are going to lose power when it gets hot? How many, how little water do we have in this state? So we, we are kind of handcuffed by, by the increased amount of water that's going to be demanded for and the increased amount of electricity that's going to be in, in demand. So you know, we have to look at all those things as well as doing rent stabilization, as Carrie said, and not rent control, but just stabilizing it a little more to make it, to make things just work with common sense. We have to be able to make things work.
All right, Jeremy, take it there. Okay, we are about halftime of our time together today. So we'll lighten up right now, lightening round for this question. What is your favorite District One restaurant? Mike, what do you like to eat?
I go to Living Stones every day. I, I am at a point in my life where I'm not going to cook anymore and the tower district is my kitchen. So I eat at Living Stones, I eat at Benny's, even detention where I go to play shuffleboard every day has food there. I go to the five, I mean, Lincoln and next door. Well, it's five, everything there's five dollars. The Lincoln and next door is Bonzak. Sorry, I, I get carried away on this subject.
Good topic. Annalisa, what's your favorite District One restaurant?
My favorite one at the moment is Casa de Tamales on Olive Avenue.
Good, good selection. All right. Carrie, where, where's your favorite eatery?
Well, Irene's the best egg salad sandwich in the universe.
All right, Jeremy Price, what's your favorite District One restaurant?
Yeah, I'm a big fan of Kukas. I love Kukas. Best, I know it's simple and cheap, but their chips are awesome.
I think we need to eat. Let's go eat.
I, I think we're discovering new places. All right, some personalized questions now. This one is for Carrie and Annalisa, but others can jump in as well. Carrie and Annalisa, if elected, you would be the first openly gay member of the city council. You know, is this a significant achievement for you? Is this a big deal? And what does this mean for you and your community? Annalisa, we'll start with you on this one.
Yeah, thanks, David. You know, I don't look at a candidate based on their sexual orientation, but right now, if one of us were to get elected, yes, we would be shattering glass ceilings and hopefully get to a point where we no longer have to ask candidates about their sexual orientation during a debate. But until then, I have no problem being the first. I've been the first in many cases in different scenarios. You know, it's, it's a special thing because we're, we're trailblazers even today. You know, the fact that we're running for office. You know, with our diverse backgrounds, it's, it's a step in the right direction. And so I'm looking forward to, as we're all moving up into different positions. What are we doing to help others similar to us, you know, move up as well? And so for me, it's about promoting diversity within, you know, not just who's running for office, but who's elected. And then once elected, who are we pointing into, you know, positions of leadership? Who are we appointing to, you know, our, our planning commission, our, our district councils? There's, there's a lot more work we can do to diversify where we are today with the positions we have influence over. But yes, I'm proud of who I am and I'm looking forward to seeing more of us step up and run for office moving forward.
Carrie, what is the prospect of being the first openly gay city council member mean to you?
Means the world. It showcases just how far we've come as a country in terms of sexual orientation and preference, preference. You know, I've been involved in civic engagement for, since I was sixteen and I've seen the drastic shift in people's attitudes towards me as a gay male acceptance. I would sit at the table at city hall with previous mayors and some people would say, you know, comments like, oh, you don't need to listen to him. He's just a gay guy. And it's just amazing how much people have changed. And you know, when you meet people out the door, it's never even a topic. People want to know, why are you running? What do you want to do? How are you going to serve us? But I do think it represents a different time in our country and the dialogue of who's going to serve. And I've been married for twenty three years. I've always been very open about who I am. And it's just nice to be comfortable living in a community where people really do embrace exactly who you are and love you for what you do and don't judge you for who you love. There's always going to be a few people that will judge you and make comments. Women have that same issue too. And that's, those are the people you just mentioned to, but you sometimes still have to work with. So it's how you keep your manners in check and how you maintain the dialogue going forward.
Well, thanks, Carrie. Jeremy Price, fifteen years in the Fresno Police Force. How's that going to shape how you'd be a city council person?
Well, I think working in the police department, you, you get used to being in the, in living in the fishbowl. I mean, it's one of those things with public service that you kind of, at first it's hard to adjust. And then over the time, you know, you're highly criticized and you're, you're in the eyes of the public nonstop constantly every day. And I would say that's the only difference with the city council and being a police officer is the city council, you shouldn't be in the public eye every day. As a police officer, you are in the public eye every day. You know, you, as an officer, you have to maintain a clean public record. You can't be in trouble with law enforcement. You know, I don't, I don't know about, you know, I'm pretty sure everyone here has a clean record, but I know for sure that I, I do. So, you know, you have to have integrity as an officer and you have to have integrity as a civil servant in general. And right now, the city council is lacking a bit of integrity. I believe I bring that to the table. And I believe I bring the fact that I work for the people and I've proven it. So that's all I need to do now is just keep moving forward and doing that and bring the common sense back.
Mike Briggs, you've served as a city councilman. You've served in the state assembly and you left. Why do you want to return to public service?
Well, first of all, living, you know, about six years ago, I moved permanently into the home I own here in the, in the tower. And it has just deteriorated over the last few years. I literally had homeless people camped out on my porch. Human feces deposited on my front walk. I have needles, pictures I take of needles on the ground, hypodermic needles that people have thrown away on the sidewalks. When I walk from here to Living Stones up Burn Avenue especially. And I have experience cleaning this stuff up and I want to go back and do it again.
All right, thanks, everybody. Now, return to some of the more policy oriented questions. And while a lot of the focus of a city council member does involve these policy issues. For many, your job is fixing neighborhood issues, streetlights, potholes, roads. So Scott Martin on Facebook wants to know, what are you going to do about bike lanes? He says they run for a few blocks and they stop and they pick up later. So what's your bike lane policy? Is there any particular bike lanes that really need attention? And Jeremy, I saw you smile. Let's go with you first.
I think the ironic part about bike lanes is that we don't do a good enough job as a city educating people the laws of the road for bicyclists. And, and you know, just because we make the lane or we don't have a lane, you still need to know the laws of the road to ride a bike in the road. So for one, we need to first educate the public with PSAs or whatever, or put on classes. Because we, we, at the department, we learn how to ride bicycles and it's a very different, very different ideal than just ride a bike down the street. There are a lot of things you can do to be safe. Riding with the flow of traffic is the number one reason that someone may or may not be hit by a vehicle. Stopping at all stop signs, just like in a car, stopping at all red lights, just like in a car. So we need to educate the community on how to ride their bikes. Yes, they do get the right away and we need to look at the traffic areas where you might have a higher concentration of bike riders than, than other areas. There are people who ride for longer miles and those people may not need the bike lanes like someone that's just riding their bikes around the neighborhood. So trying to define those areas where we need to really upkeep and maintain or even increase the bike lanes is the first step. And then educating the people on how the laws of the road work for bicyclists, I think, is the next step.
Right, Annalisa, your, your biking policy in answer, Scott, you know, what lanes, what areas of town, District One, need some help?
Yeah, so I would love to see more investments in alternative modes of transportation. So that means bigger investments in bicycle infrastructure, investments in pedestrian infrastructure. There are a number of improvements that I would like to see west of the ninety nine. They'll, they'll tell you all the time that they feel forgotten about in many cases. They feel like their infrastructure has not been fully built out. I'm a firm believer in safe routes to school funding and I think that's where we could really tap into to help build out a lot of that missing infrastructure we see from neighborhoods to points of interest like schools. And we, we, we just suffered a big loss in our community in District One just a couple of weeks ago and we had a pedestrian vehicle collision. There's so much more we could be doing. Some of the, the most dangerous intersections are in District One. It's, it's Palm and Clinton. It's, you know, Van Ness and Clinton. It's, there's so many improvements that we can be making to protect our residents today that we're not making. And so my priorities moving forward are going to be to focus on not just west of the ninety nine, but in the Fresno High community because that's one of the most pedestrian walked areas of our city. And it continues to be one of the most unsafe areas for pedestrians.
Right, Annalisa, thank you. Mike Briggs, how did you enter Scott? You know, how do you improve bike safety, bike lanes? What bike lanes need to be fixed?
First of all, we kind of get cars to respect the bike lanes, stay out of the bike lanes, respect the bicyclists and their space. We don't always even see them when we crowd them out. Second, I used to be against these taking away the, the car lanes to add bike lanes. But later, after they did it here and go to my house on Van Hass and over on Fulton and lead it all the way to downtown. We took two lane roads and narrowed them to one lane and it slowed the traffic down, which I used to be frustrated by, but maybe because I'm older. I think it's a good idea that the traffic is slowed down, just like the incident that Annalisa Parra just mentioned over on McKinley where a lady was killed. Those, that traffic is just way too fast, so way too aggressive. I think slowing it down, putting in more bike lanes, making it more pedestrian and bicycle accessible is not bad for our city. I've taken to riding the bus because I get on the bus in front of my house, take it to Dakota and Blackser and go to Planet Fitness and take it back again. I think anything we could do to get people out of cars and into other modes of transportation is going to be good for all of us.
All right, Carrie, bike lanes.
Yeah. Bike lanes is a big topic in District One and key neighborhoods. And I think number one, what happened on McKinley, I live right off of McKinley and Adeline. Number one, drivers need to slow down and pay attention to the pedestrians and those riding their bicycles throughout the district. Not everybody in this city can afford a car or afford to take the bus. So they need to pay attention. They need to get off their phone. They need to quit texting. Number two, we need to look at the major thoroughfares that have heavy traffic and looking at traffic slowing mechanisms. And at the same time, fully invest and connect. So cyclists have the ability to get from point A to point B safely. Palm Avenue is a very good example of a multi jurisdiction road between the city and the county. So we need to, we need to add those bike lanes in. They need to go all the way down Shaw. It doesn't matter where the line hits the county of Fresno and needs to continue. Absolutely. We are the most friendly pedestrian cyclist districts throughout the city on, in the Fresno High area, but also west of ninety nine for our Seek and Pujabi community who really enjoy walking the neighborhoods and cycling the neighborhoods. So we need to make a priority as we're repaving each street, each thoroughfare that we add the bike claim. And that we really do an aggressive strategy to educate the voters and work with our peace officers to ensure that traffic laws are followed.
All right, Annalisa, you mentioned this in your last response and as we have a few more minutes left, let's try to tighten responses here for everybody. But you talked about west of ninety nine and yes, they have called themselves Forgotten Fresno. And yeah, District One is more just the tower district, not the Fresno High area. It is west Fresno as well. So what are you going to do for your west Fresno neighbors?
Yeah, very good question. Yeah, so I'm not waiting until I get elected to start making change in my community. I'm currently working with a lot of residents west of the ninety nine to get speed bumps installed to get their sidewalks fixed. There's a number of issues right now that they feel like are low hanging fruit and I agree with them in order to make these, these small changes. You know, the, the Shaw and Polk intersection, you know, I hear about that all the time from residences who are tired of traffic congestion. And so you know, I'm talking to the District Two council member about how we can prioritize funding to fix the Shaw and Polk intersection. So it's just tangible change that needs to be occurring where I'm already, you know, jumping on board full fours and figuring out solutions to how we can get things accomplished. We have a great community development center west of the ninety nine that I'm going to be partnering with moving forward to make sure that we continue to provide the necessary resources to the families west of the ninety nine. The biggest issue also is speeding and racing out there. And so I had coffee with our police chief last week and to talk about, you know, what are these? How are we really going to address safety issues, not just gang related and violent crime related, but speeding?
Well, I'll leave it there. Jeremy Price, what are you going to do for your constituents west of ninety nine?
That's, that's a very important question because they, they have been ignored for so many years. It's like they are so far out there, no one, no one remembers them. One, the infrastructure there is highly, highly old and rundown and the sidewalks are terrible, the streets are terrible. And Lisa was saying the intersection infrastructure is terrible. Just along the Shaw and Golden State railroad tracks there, they create a backup for more than five or ten minutes at a time when the train stops. There needs to be a solution for there. There needs to be a sub, police substation out there so that the, the responses can be quicker. The, the town is expanding so far out there, it takes an average officer anywhere from five to eight minutes to respond to a call because most of the majority of the calls are in the middle of town and on the, and, and the officer just don't spend a lot of time out there. The community engagement needs to, needs to be more positive with the Punjabi and Sikh culture out there. And they just need to feel like they're included in this city as well and, and they are extremely important and need to have their homes and streets and sidewalks treated like they're extremely important as well.
All right, Jeremy, thank you. Mike Briggs, what do you do about Forgotten Fresno on the west side of ninety nine? Mike, when I hear you, you know, Mike, we'll get back to you. Carrie, what would you do about west Fresno?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think the first step was when we approved the twenty thirty five general plan when I was on the planning commission to ensure west Fresno was a number one growth priority priority for and to ensure the residents of that area that they are no longer forgotten. It stirred investment and strategic growth to repair decades of neglect of public infrastructure. Uh, first day in office, I would propose the Infrastructure Prioritization Act, which would actually prioritize infrastructure funding for neighborhoods that have been long forgotten. We know many areas in west uh, west of ninety nine and even in east of ninety nine in the district have been forgotten because they don't have the political muscle or the ear of the council members. Listen, we are all doing our part as we are out there walking. Some are telling their council member that is their best friend. Some of us are telling another council member, some of us are telling the mayor that we need to get abandoned cars and trash and cracked sidewalks fixed right away. The reality is, there's not one person here that doesn't care about west of ninety nine. We all care about west of ninety nine. But at the end of the day, every candidate says they care about west of ninety nine, and very little has been done to stabilize the neighborhood over the last thirty years. And I don't care what anybody tells me. The reality is, there are conditions over the last eight years have gotten progressively worse than better. And that's why on the first day in office, I'm going to propose this Infrastructure Prioritization Act. So the residents of west of ninety nine, that a good chunk of our infrastructure dollars are going to go to fix our streets, their sidewalks, their poor, their poor drainage, and to make sure people have a safe passageway to their schools. Not one, not one more development will be approved if I, when I'm council member, that does not have a sidewalk on both sides, that there is adequate streetlights, and that our children and our residents could get to save, school safely. End of story.
All right, Mike, uh, we got you back now. How do you handle the residents west of ninety nine briefly?
First of all, I represented that area when I was on the city council previously. We made them a high priority. Most important thing about being a council member is responding to your constituents. If someone calls, we get back to them, somebody makes a request, we get that request resolved. A lot of complaints we're getting when I'm going door to doors, we just can't hear from our council member. And when I was on the council, they heard from us. Very important about west of ninety nine is most of it is in the central unified school district. I remain and stayed engaged with the school board out there, the principals out there, the superintendents and and central unified. And uh, that's a good place to start in finding out what the needs are out there. Central Unified, one great school district.
All right.
Wait, wait, no.
Jeremy, brief rebuttal, brief rebuttal.
Yeah, Mike, listen, I appreciate your time on the council. But the reality is, if you look at the conditions of these neighborhoods today, some of them were there before you were a council member, and they are significantly not better. So we're looking at three decades of poor management of city resources. And I know you were on the council before, but you keep reframing back to when you were, but they're no better today. So my question is, how is that going to be better?
Mike, thirty seconds respond.
Great, better way, bring Brett, bring back Briggs, that's how it'll get better.
All right. We just have time for a couple more questions. Uh, we talked about this earlier, transparency on the city council. There've been a couple incidents in the recent months, whether it's the Tower Theater, whether it's been handling the settlement of former city clerk Yvonne Spence, whether it's, uh, you know, the revelation that the city got scammed for millions of dollars. Not a lot of transparency at the city council and city hall on these issues. So I ask you, how are you going to be transparent on these tough issues with your constituents and with folks like me in the media? Jeremy, uh, tough issue happens, I call you. Uh, how are you going to be transparent about, talk about these issues?
Well, the the main thing is that you get treated just like any other constituent, so you get told the truth. There shouldn't be any secrets in city hall, right? I mean, that shouldn't be the the place where the secrets are are kept because we work for everybody, no matter what district we're in, no matter if we're city council, we're mayor, city attorney, city manager, we work for the people of the city. So.
All right, thanks, thanks, Jeremy. Annalisa, you are an elected member currently on the state senate or community college board, so you get called in the media. How do you, you know, when it's a tough question, when the media, when constituents press you, are you going to shut down or are you willing to talk? What's your philosophy on this, being transparent, especially these tough issues like tower and settlements and stuff like that?
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, we we need to restore trust and transparency in government at every level of government. You know, I'm I pride myself on always having been transparent, and I will continue to be transparent moving forward. Um, you know, we, in order to increase transparency and trust, um, we need to open up city hall, which is why I'm going to be having mobile office hours throughout my district moving forward. You need to continue to connect with the people that you serve. And so for me, it's about keeping those lines of communication open, and I'm going to be doing that through. I'm having these mobile office hours in my district moving forward.
Mike Briggs, uh, open sea, openness, transparency, what's your philosophy on that?
Make no mistake, I'm going to have an office right here in the tower district, that's for sure. When I was previously on the council, I opposed most uses of this closed secret session the council did every single week. Sometimes you need it when negotiating labor contracts or or selling a lawsuit, but I felt that the city used it inappropriately, and I openly opposed it then, I openly oppose it now. We need way more transparency. Cities make mistakes, cities make errors. Um, but I think you're going to make a lot fewer mistakes and errors if you're very open, very, very open.
All right, Carrie, uh, well, you're in the last word on this topic. Uh, do you think the city hall, city council are transparent, and what will you do to change that?
Uh, listen, I think we need, we all need to work to be as transparent as possible. There are always going to be items that need to be discussed in closed session, uh, real estate transactions, employment issues. You know, I always feel that you need to return a a reporter's call, give them the best information you can. Don't give them the information you can't, explain to them why you can't give them key informations. That is transparency, because there are things that you just cannot discuss because things are being negotiated. When it comes to really hot button issues regarding the purchase of a of a theater or a decision that needs to be made that has significant community impact. You know, I I believe that when you intentionally schedule a hot button item at ten o'clock in the morning when most people are working and can't take the time off work, that is not transparent. When you know it's a significant issue that has many voices that need to be heard, you have public hearings throughout the community uh, over a series of days and over a series of times can you, so you can maximize public input. And then before you make the decision, you say, we've had five community meetings in different places of the district. All the council members have heard the voices at all different times and all different languages, and then you take the vote. The reality of something scheduled at ten o'clock, you might not hear it at two o'clock because they're always jockeying the time schedule, and Mike knows this. The reality is, if you're going to be heard at ten o'clock, you better damn well be heard at ten o'clock. Because what happens if you're not, hold on, if you're not heard till two o'clock, it's not transparent, and there's always a reason behind it.
All right, we have about one more question, just another minute or so. So give me your thirty second elevator pitch. Why are you the best candidate for district one? Annalisa, why should you win this race? Why are you the best candidate?
Yeah, thanks, David. Um, so I have a proven record of being an action oriented leader, a a solution based leader here in my community. I'm not waiting until elected to office to get to work. I've been doing the work over the last fifteen months related to district one. Um, I'm going to be at a press conference later today announcing a new park in district one. Um, there's so much that needs to be done, and our folks are hungry for a leader to come in and to um, create tangible change that they have so desperately been wanting to see. So I know I'm the right person for that job.
That's your elevator pitch. Carrie, your your thirty second elevator pitch, what makes you the best? Carrie.
Oh, Carrie, sorry. Listen, I've been doing the work my entire life to make Fresno a better place, from the planning commission to the housing authority, to being a student body president. I have put myself at odds with my own political party to make a difference for our city. I do not play politics or decisions that need to be made to lift all the entire families' lives throughout the city, throughout the district. I have always made the right choice. I'm I'm tested and I'm proven, and I don't just talk about doing things, I have done them. Thank you.
Carrie, thank you. Mike Briggs, elevator pitch, why are you the best guy?
I was on the council, I did it. I was in the state legislature, I know where the money's buried, and Fresno needs our money back from the state and federal government. I increased the police department, I'll do it again. We got tough on crime, we got the first helicopter, we got the first foot and bike patrols in the tower district, and those will be back as soon as I'm in office. And finally, I think we need to take care of people who are in trouble and are homeless. But there's so many able bodied people who are homeless just because they've decided, and I do not want to give them free homes. I want to dispatch them out of our neighborhoods.
All right, and Jeremy Price, last word on why you are the best candidate, thirty seconds.
I'm the best candidate because I'm not a politician. I'm not someone in there for political gain. I have everything to gain and nothing to lose. I'm not part of the current people that are in there. I am not playing the game with anybody now. I'm going to be tough on on issues that need to be tough on, I'll tell the truth, I'll speak the truth. And I don't have anything else to to gain from it or move forward from in a political career. You won't see me jump to the assembly, you won't see me leave my city because I want to go somewhere else. And I'm the guy who's going to make a tough question, that's a father, a husband, and 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 soon to be one day, hopefully, not very long time, but a grandfather in this city.
All right, thank you so much for joining us. I'm going to ask you one final question. I've said the toughest question for last, one word answer. Jeremy, since we got you on, we'll start with you, Giants or Dodgers?
Oh, my gosh.
I'm Dodgers.
Carrie.
Why are you asking Carrie Catalano a sports question?
All right, all right, Mike Briggs, Giants or Dodgers?
Oh, Giants, of course, the Giants.
And Annalisa.
Giants, baby, all day.
All right, Annalisa Preia, Mike Briggs, Carrie Catalano, Jeremy Price, thank you so much for joining. Remember, voters, you have until June seventh, one of these four are going to be your next councilman, and perhaps we'll go to November for this runoff, we'll see. Thank you so much for joining us on TV Wire.
Have a good day, everybody.
All right.